I'm gonna wait just one minute because I see that participant counter ticking up. So people are just able to join. Good evening and welcome to this candidate forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Norwalk. The League is a nonpartisan political membership organization which builds citizen participation in the political process. We are dedicated to providing information to voters to make informed decisions at the polls. My name is Mary Oster and I will be introducing the forum this evening. Our candidate this evening is Laura Smiths and our timer is Kristen Hoyt.
Our moderator. Or candidate, you call me a candidate.
I'm so sorry. Moderator this evening is Laura Smiths.
They're done that.
And our timer is Kristen Hoyt. We will be hearing the positions on local issues from the candidates for the common council in District E. The audience is in listening mode only and can can see all of the candidates, the moderator and the timer on their screens. The candidates cannot see or hear the audience. All forums hosted by the League will be recorded and can be accessed on the League's website and Facebook page. You can also access the recordings to all of our forums that we've held this week on the League of Women Voters of Connecticut YouTube page. We will begin by asking questions prepared up by the League of Women Voters followed by questions submitted in advance by Norwalk voters. The order that the candidates will answer was predetermined randomly. Candidates will have two minutes to answer the question followed by a 30 second rebuttal by any other candidate. Kristen is the timer. She will hold up a yellow sign to indicate that the candidate has 30 seconds left and a red sign when their time is up. I will now turn it over to our moderator Laura Smiths.
Thank you so much, Mary. Thanks everyone for participating tonight. As Mary mentioned, we have two minute closing statements and each candidate will get two minutes to answer each question with a 30 second rebuttal if desired. I'm gonna start right off so we can get to see how many questions we can get in if that's okay. Are you ready Kristen? Okay, the first question goes to you, Ms. Snyder. It is if you're an incumbent, what have you specifically done for the city? And if you're a newcomer, what are your top two priorities?
Well, thank you for having me Laura and thank you Mary for helping me with my digital issues. Thank you to everyone in the League of Women for being here. I am absolutely a newcomer. I'm not a politician. I'm a concerned parent. And Norwalk and Norwalker been here for 20 years and the first thing I would do would be to welcome all of District E residents into the club. Because I don't think there's a lot of transparency. I haven't heard a lot from what's happening in our district from our council members. And I think we can do better and we've actually started doing better. And I started, the first thing I wanted to do was to reach out and invite people to the club and we have had great attendees come from all over District E and talking about what has been most concerning to them as residents and hearing from them. And and that will be definitely the first thing I will do will be to try to advocate for Norwalkers. And do what is best for Norwalk so we can continue to love living here and be able to afford to live here.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Shanahan, you're next. Same question to you.
Yeah, so I think that I have two really important priorities for our district and they continue to be top of order. First of all, climate change is pervading every aspect of our city life. We really need to create an office of sustainability with real enforcement teeth to inform our work in every other department, including the Department of Public Works, P and Z, Conservation and Economic Development. We have been really suffering with flooding and other concerns. So these are things that are super on the minds of a lot of our constituents. Also, we need more engineering studies, some of which are already underway to better understand our waterfront resilience as well as the paths of our rivers and watersheds. As I said, many of our homeowners are at risk to have severe damage to their homes during these large weather events and we need to have good plans to help them and these studies will definitely help. And in general, as a city, we need to assess our energy uses and adding more solar panels to our buildings, both our city buildings as well as our education and BOE buildings, electric cars to our fleets, we really need to assess our energy level. So sustainability and climate change is super important. The second thing that I think is a high priority for our city is our livability. We've heard from our district members and it's really important that we make our city more walkable and our district more walkable. We need to add more city sidewalks, more bike paths. We need to create our neighborhoods to be more connected so we can get around and get to know our neighbors. We need to advocate for some new planning and zoning regulations that are going to be greener, that take into account our parking needs and our traffic needs, as well as keeping our waterfront accessible and visible for the enjoyment of all of our residents. And finally, part of livability is affordability. We need to balance needs of our Board of Ed and our city and our budgeting process and make good taxation decisions. It's important we keep our taxation reasonable so Norwalk is affordable both for the young families that will be our lifeblood as well as for our longtime residents who've contributed so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ranello.
Well, thank you, especially to the League of Women Voters. Wonderful to meet so many of you at Calf Pastor Beach not too many weeks ago. I'm very impressed with with the organization. This is my first time running for office. It's been a very positive experience. I've met hundreds of families in our district. And learning so much in terms of answering your question as a newcomer, what are my top two priorities? It's very simple. My number one priority is Norwalk. My number two priority is Norwalk. That means that there's certain things that are not my priorities in terms of third party forces using the municipalities to piggybank to develop properties that no one's asking for because I again hundreds of families in our district, I have yet to meet a single voter that says, Andrew, what we really need are more apartments. I do hear things that they do need, you know, and I'd say if there's any trends, there's two trends I've learned meeting so many people. One is that people are raving fans about living in Norwalk. They've lived in our homes oftentimes for decades. They love living in Norwalk. And the other trend is there tends to be some friction. And that friction is dependent on which part of the district you meet. It might be over development. It might be over occupation. It might be traffic. It might be schools or buses. It depends on the part of the district. But on occasion, there is some friction. In terms of how I plan on making Norwalk my number one and number two priority, very simple strategy is to listen and to do my best to remember that the voters' opinions matter more than my own. Won't be able to deliver everything, nor is there any part of my campaign that makes any particular promises. But you do have my commitment to listen and remember your opinions matter more than my own. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Snyder, could you, if you're not speaking, I, could you please turn off your audio just in case there's some?
Oh, sure. Oh, sorry. Sure.
Go ahead. Mr. Livingston, go ahead.
All right, thank you. First, I want to thank the League for putting on this debate and to my colleagues for participating in it. I'm gonna answer the question kind of as a hybrid. You asked what I would do, what I've done as an incumbent or what I would do going forward. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of both. I've served for six years. I'm seeking my fourth term. As I look forward, I'll start there. I think the most important issue facing the city going forward is climate change and sustainability. We have walked and met and talked with neighbors throughout the district. And without fail, the number one issue that people are raising is flooding. That is pervasive throughout all of our district, a five mile river down in Rowayton all over. And I think that's something we need to address. So and so sustainability encompasses water remediation, flooding remediation encompasses livability like Ms. Shanahan said, and it also encompasses just taking stock of the environment and natural climate change in every action the city takes. But what have I done in the past? I mean, that's also important. You asked that. And I have led the effort in my prior terms to bring styrofoam ban as well as a plastic bag ban as well as a straw and stirrups ban to the city, all of which have significantly helped to reduce waste in the city. And these are important issues because they may seem small, but they have removed plastic waste from both our waste supply, which costs the city taxpayers money, as well as remove some from our beaches and from our water supply. And it's this one step in moving forward on taking care of sustainability and watching for climate change. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going, are there any rebuttals to that? Are there, would anyone like to rebut or say an extra 30 seconds on this topic?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. It seems that if there's ever any variation of more than seven degrees Fahrenheit in the weather, everybody starts screaming climate change and Chicken Little and all this. I didn't even know Norwalk had a city council. And I've lived in Norwalk for 25 years. I didn't know they had a council until they started outlawing plastic. And from what I've learned meeting with people is that this ordinance of your plastic bag ban, although it may be well intentioned, it may not have had the effect that you need because the people I'm speaking with says it's it's made my plastic consumption skyrocket. And not only that, have the use of the plastic.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ranello, Mr. Livingston, would you like a 30 second?
Yeah, I need to comment on that. You know, I, we passed a ban about three years ago. Other municipalities have followed us. It has had a significant impact on our waste product in the city. For example, in our recycling systems, they used to be the plastic bags would get tangled in the machinery. That no longer happens. We are cleaning up our water supply. Our beaches are cleaner. I mean, I just did a clean up myself along harbor, the inner harbor and found a lot less straws and plastic bags as did others. So it is having a positive impact in the city.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Shanahan.
Yeah, just to follow up on Mr. Livingston's comments, we were actually coming, having conversations with cops oyster. And they said that since the past ban has been enforced, they're no longer having to clean and clean their engines from being fouled by plastic bags in Long Island Sound. So it's even affecting our oyster industry in a positive manner.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to question two. This one is for Ms. Shanahan first. And it's coincidentally related. This year, the General Assembly updated the bottle bill to eventually increase the deposit to 10 cents. In addition to other measures, if elected, what are one or two action steps you would take to improve the amount of plastic bottles, glass bottles and cans that are recycled properly and not thrown in the trash? Ms. Shanahan, you go first.
Well, we have been strong supporters of making our recycling laws as clear as possible. And it is really confusing. I think that when people look at their blue bins, they're not really sure what they should be putting in. Should they be putting their materials in plastic bags, should be putting in in paper bags? And we've been working really closely with the DPW staff to try to come up with some ideas about how to educate the public about the importance of this proper collection of bottles, plastic and glass and other types of recyclables. And it's really important to do so because it is an important source of waste stream. And what a lot of people don't know about our waste stream and one of the things that we did to also improve the waste stream is Mr. Livingston and I brought the first food waste collection pilot program in the city of Norwalk and it has been wildly successful. And what we do with our waste in Norwalk is we burn it. So when you take heavy food waste and you put it in an incinerator, it's doubly inefficient, right? You're taking wet stuff and you're burning it. It doesn't make any sense. So I think that we're looking at our waste stream from top to bottom to try to find ways to make it more efficient, make it more environmentally friendly and to bring about good change to this. It's a very expensive process as well. We are paying a lot of money to cart our bottles and our plastic bottles away. So we do need to be, we need to find new ways of handling our waste that are more efficient.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ranello.
Yeah, I think, well, what I see walking along the shoreline is not plastic bag. What I see are water bottles. You know, those those thin, clear, plastic water bottles. They float, they last forever. One thing I think we could do is to instill confidence in our water supply. Second taxing District Water Department, I've been a customer theirs for 25 years. As far as I'm concerned, they do an excellent job. They produce a dependable product. And when I was a kid, that's where you got your glass of water from, right from the tap. I don't know why we can't promote that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Stuart Livingston.
Yes. First off, you know, I would strongly support the efforts on the state level to reduce the plastic bottle usage. The reason for that is it's very difficult for a municipality such as Norwalk to regulate the use of water bottles, right? They come in from all places. It's just, it's extremely difficult. We looked at this. But what we've done is I have worked with the representatives on the Stanford Board of Representatives in terms of working together as two of the largest cities in the state to come up with environmental solutions. And that's one of the reasons we came up with the plastic bag ban. They followed us after that with the straws. But the point being that we do need to work as a state level to try and limit the use of these plastic bottles. One thing I've done in particular in the City Hall, we've had the Alan Lowe, who's directed facilities, put in water filling stations in the building. It's a small step, but it's an important step. And I also want to point out that these are important from dollars and cents to taxpayers, to the taxpayers. I mean, every bottle that's thrown in the garbage costs us money, right? And we can't minimize that particularly that we, we're in the last couple of years of a contract with our recycling provider. So we're, we're in a good place right now, but that's not gonna last. And I'm not sure, I think it's of the next year that contracts can expire and we run the risk of going from receiving funds to paying significant funds. So we need to do all we can to reduce the amount of waste that goes in our public waste stream. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Ms. Snyder. You're muted, Ms. Snyder. Ms. Snyder, you're muted. Go ahead.
Sorry, clearly muted. So I moved to Nor, I moved to Norwalk about over 20 years ago. And one of the things that I relished was how delicious our water was right from the tap at the time. And my family would come up from Florida and everybody would talk about how delicious our water was right, right from the tap without any purifying system or anything like that. And I think what the real problem is, is that we're not investing in our infrastructure, in our infrastructure. You know, we have a density issue. And we are now, I'm not sure if people are aware of this, that Norwalk is more densely populated than Stanford and Danbury. And I think we need to invest in being able to get back to turning the water on and drinking it right from the tap. And maybe that would help encourage people not to have to buy water because our brown water that's all over on next door Rowayton and, you know, and everybody talks about and laughs about. Maybe we wouldn't, people wouldn't be so encouraged to have to purchase water. They should be able to turn on the tap and drink it from their homes.
Okay, thank you very much. Rebutts on this question.
Yeah, I just wanted to say the one thing I'm hearing from people that I meet in their homes in our district is, yeah, these are all nice gestures. It's all great. I'm sure they're all very proud of themselves. But if you really want to impress me, let's see if we can get something going with this Manresa coal plant that's that's out there. It's a much more conspicuous thing. It's not easy. It's not an easy solution, but there's a lot of talent on that, on the, on the, you know, on Town Hall and on the council. There's gotta be a solution there and then people want it.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston.
Yeah, I just want to note in terms of water uses, it's an interesting fact that with the new, some of the new development downtown, we are actually using less water as a city than we did in the past. And that's partly because these new buildings are upgrading the infrastructure such that we don't need as much water. So I just want to point that out. And to Mr. Ranello, I do agree with you about Manresa and we're certainly doing our best to move that along.
Thank you. Anyone else want to add to this discussion? Okay, we're going to move to question three. And Mr. Ranello, you are, you get to answer this question first. What is the most pressing issue facing your district?
Yes, again, speaking with people, the top of the list is overdevelopment and overcrowding. So again, where are these apartments coming from? I'm not asking for them. I don't think it's organically needed or demanded by the city of Norwalk. The other thing is, gee, I've got this neighbor that's treating a single family home on a one acre property as if it's a contractor yard. Whether it be, you know, they're taking stones and crushing gravel there or they're just trucks coming in and out at all kinds of hours. The other thing is, we were so thrilled when our neighbor bought that home and immediately they put 15 employees that are staying there. Who's managing this? Who's inspecting these properties? You know, you talk to the fire department, they shrug their shoulders and say, well, it's single family. We're not required to inspect it. So whenever this comes up, from what I understand is we do have a mechanism, whether it be inspections or zoning and other things, but it's just not being enforced. So again, that's top of the list. There's, there's two, three, four and five on the list, but number one, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Livingston.
Thank you. And walking around and talking with our neighbors throughout the district, as I mentioned before, the number one issue that is coming up over and over is flooding and that these most recent storms have overwhelmed a lot of the wastewater treatment. I'm not sorry, the runoff of the water systems in terms of taking off the excess rain. People have been flooding. And we do need to address that. And that gets into the whole climate issue we talked about before and sustainability. But we are trying to address these issues as we see them. We have, we're working with the Department of Public Works. We know there are a number of studies underway, including one up in the Ponos area, which will address that watershed, which hopefully the results will be public in the next couple of weeks. But it is a big issue and we have to be better prepared for these storms. It's not going to be cheap. And so it's actually quite expensive and I'm glad that the mayor has put in eight or nine million in the new ARPA funds towards funding additional flood remediation to the city. I think we need that. I think we need more, but that is the issue I'm seeing right now.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Snyder.
Yeah, I really think that we need to do better and we owe it to Norwalkers to do right by them. We need responsible development that pays their fair share in taxes. Right now, if you look from Water Street over to Route One, many of those developments are receiving from anywhere between seven to 15 years of tax credits. And that matters because it's not fair to the homeowners and the small business owners to carry the burden of funding our schools and our roads and, and, and just the lack of the lack of attention that we're, that we're offering to our community because, you know, we're spending so much money, but what are we actually getting in return? And, and it's not fair for these developers to get the tax credits that they're getting because it's robbing us and it's, and it's killing our schools and our vastly underfunded schools was one of the main reasons why I got involved because we need to do better for our kids. So they continue to, so they can continue to thrive here and them and live here well and safely.
Okay, Ms. Shanahan, finally.
I see three pressing district needs and these are based upon, as Mr. Livingston says, we've been walking and probably knocking on more than a thousand doors in recent weeks. I would say that the most important thing is, as Mr. Living says, is flooding. That's throughout the Five Mile River, the Bets Brook area and other watershed areas. And these floods have been devastating to some of our homeowners who are risking the loss of their homes. So it's a super and super important issue. We're working closely with DPW Emergency Services and the Conservation Office to address these concerns. Another really important issue in our district that's brought to us every single day is sidewalks. And we've been working very hard throughout West Norwalk and Rowayton especially to bring sidewalks to some of these areas where lots of people are trying to get around with, walking with kids and strollers and dogs. And we need to make our streets better designed, not only for just cars, but also for people and their families. And then the third thing that seems to be a concern in our district is zoning. And across our district inner city, constituents are telling us that some of the buildings we're seeing don't really match up with the vision that we have for our city. We need to add more green infrastructure in our, and prioritize more clean and efficient energy in our new buildings. Stormwater and sewage management is also an important matter, which is getting addressed in green landscaping. And we do need to consider traffic and parking studies on developers to ensure that the neighborhoods can absorb the new residents that they do. And we want to make sure that the historic character of our neighborhood stays the same. But these are the three important things that people have been raising to us, flooding, sidewalks and zoning issues.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, do we have any rebuttals on that question? Hearing none. We will move on. Question four is for you, Mr. Livingston first. What, and this is a similar, this is kind of interesting how these kind of piggyback onto the same subject. What can be done to create a mechanism for homeowners who need emergency repairs to prevent further costly property damage from flooding in areas such as Five Mile River? Who is willing to bring this flaw to the, in the federal and state regulations to the attention of Governor Ben Lamont? This is an unbearable hardship for affected homeowners. Visibly damaged properties waiting for approvals affects surrounding property values. Mr. Livingston.
Thank you. And it's sad to say, we know this all too well. We have been working with some neighbors along the Five Mile River who have had devastating floods. And what we have done and what we've told them and worked with them on is that there are a number of sources, most notably in FEMA, that has various programs available to help people who are devastated by floods. We are working with Michelle DeLuca, who is the city's emergency response agent, as well as Alexis Cherashetti, who is a conservation officer, to try and bring relief to these people. It is really sad to see. It's devastating what's been done to their properties. Which is one of the reasons I said flooding is so important to deal with. The, there are several programs. There are basically programs that allow the homeowner to simply lift their house if it's, if it's in the right place. But if they're in a flood plain, like some of these places are, they're not committed to raise their houses. So what's the alternative? Some municipalities have applied for and obtained funds from FEMA to purchase the house. Sometimes that requires a contribution from the homeowner or perhaps the city. We are looking at all these options for the homeowners. As I said, it's just terrible to see this. We really feel for them, but we do have the resources of the city. They are in full contact with the state and the feds to try and find solutions to these problems.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder.
Yeah, I'll make sure that I'm here. I think that, that's, that's great to hear, Tom, because I've actually met a few of those residents that live along that live along actually right down our street and that have actually just recently spoken with you. And they still haven't heard back. I know that you had mentioned to them that you were gonna look into things, but again, it's just that communication that they were just asking me about it a few nights ago because unfortunately they're still at a loss on what can actually be done for them. They, it's, it's been absolutely devastating to them and the fact that unfortunately they still have no answers and still don't know what can be done for them. So I'm glad to hear that you're communicating. And it would be great for them to be able to hear that from you too.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Shanahan.
Yes, I'm just so glad to follow up on Mr. Livingston's comments because actually we have been in very close communications with all of those residents on sometimes a daily, sometimes an hourly and often certainly a weekly basis. And in fact, I just wrote to all of them yesterday to give them an update about where we stand with our communications with the city, with the state and with the federal government. And unfortunately, we're not in control of exactly when the federal government's gonna get back to us with regard to when they're gonna make a determination as to whether or not FEMA is gonna declare this as a disaster zone. But we are keeping everybody informed as best we can because we know that every time it rains, their hearts start to beat harder. And there's times when I actually wake up in the middle of the night and I worry about that young family down there with that eight month old and think I should call them and tell them to come stay at my house. I'm so concerned about them because of the devastations that they've had in their houses. So absolutely, we think this is an important issue and we are completely on it and we are so concerned for those residents. This is a daily concern of Tom's and mine and we're in contact with the city every day about it. There's just not a lot we can do until we're told by the federal government what they're willing to do. And there's a, there's many, many visits that have been made by the FEMA people. They were here just last Thursday and Friday. And we haven't yet heard back from them about what the results are. But believe me, you, we are completely on this. We're completely concerned for our residents and not just in Rowayton and McHenry Court, but also northern Five Mile River as well, places like Bonny Book Trail, Bonny Book Road. We have seen what these floods are doing and it's very concerning. So yes, it's a daily concern and we are daily in communication with the DPW to find out where we are on these matters.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ranello.
These, these claims are multi-dimensional. You know, you've got the emotional aspect of your primary residence, which the way we're wired as people is to assume that, you know, it's a given. You come home, it's a place you feel safe and comfortable. And it's gone or it's severely disrupted. You've got the financial aspect of it, which means while you're waiting aspect of it, which means while you're waiting for that insurance company to inspect. And then what do they do? They give you an offer of $10,000 for a $50,000 claim, right? And then you got to fight that with the insurance company, maybe get lawyers involved. And then housing, you've got to pay for a hotel. And you're still paying a mortgage and all the expenses and the insurance premiums for that home that's unusable. So there, there's probably some solutions out there on the insurance side, possibly on the banking side to delay or, I mean, if we could defer mortgage payments for a virus, we can certainly defer mortgage payments due to flooding. You know, because that's, that's the big part of it. I mean, having had a, had a claim like that myself personally, that's what I remember. Most of all is, you mean, I've got to continue paying these mortgage payments and I can't even stay there? Yeah. So again, if we can do it for a virus, we could probably do some similar solutions for, for flooding that would be quick and easy to implement.
Thank you. Are there any rebuttals on this question? Okay, I think we can squeeze in one more question. This time we will go to, go back to Ms. Snyder. For question five. I'm sorry, we'll go to Ms. Shanahan for question. All right, are we ready? This is kind of a long question as well. Oh, sorry. This is a Zoom call. This is what happens with cats on Zoom calls. Okay, hold on one second. I'm going to fill that later. During the past budget cycles, our schools were not fully funded. This year, the differential was made up with federal COVID relief funds. However, these federal funds are limited and will run out the next two years. The BOE CFO has warned the city that the schools will face a cliff in funding when this occurs, resulting in dangerous cuts to schools. As a member of the common council, which determines BOE funding, the largest part of our budget, how will you address this issue and what is your view on how to properly fund the BOE? Ms. and you may go first.
Great, thank you. I find this question a little bit, and I, I think there's a few misconceptions embedded in this question that I'd like to clarify. The role of the common council is to set a cap as to what the city will spend for both the city and for the Board of Education expenses. And then it's the BET's job to allocate that cap as between the city and the Board of Education. And so that's an important understanding that, you know, kind of a basis for understanding to understand how this budget process works. And the question gets it a little bit wrong. The Board of Education, I mean, the BET and the city can never give less to the Board of Ed than what was funded in the year prior pursuant to state law. So we never can give less to the Board of Ed one year to the next. And in fact, in the last several years, we've given very handsome increases to the Board of Ed. So the Board of Ed is always kind of fully funded. But in negotiations between the city and the Board of Ed for annual funding, it is expected that both the city and the Board of Ed will certainly ask for more than they probably expect to get to be funded in, as an initial negotiation stance, right? Like that's negotiations 101. So as Bruce Kimmel, who's a former Board of Ed member, said famously to me once, it is the Board of Ed's job to ask for as much money as possible and it's the common council and BET's job to make sure that the budget is realistic for taxpayers. And so there is a balancing act. As far as the concept of a cliff, I'm a little bit concerned if you, you know, confused by that phrase as well. The federal funds that are payable to the Board of Ed this year, the extra funds are for remediation programs that account for the COVID losses. And second, I don't think that our hardworking Norwalk taxpayers would want us to charge them extra taxes now for future and unknowable operating expenses of the Board of Ed several years hence. So I think that we're going to have to deal with these issues as they come, understand what the Board of Education's needs are in the year that we're addressing and face it that way. I certainly do think that the common council and the Board of Ed members ought to be collaborating more closely though, for both our financial planning and land use endeavors. And I, I'll stop there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ranello?
Yeah, I, I have three children. My two youngest are at Fox Run. I serve on the School Governance Council of Fox Run. And I can tell you, just having a point of view from the inside that I don't really hear a lot of complaints about, we don't have enough money, where I see most of the activity is going towards strategy. And a lot of the effort right now is trying to undo the damage from internet school. All these lockdowns hurt a lot of kids. There's a whole generation of second graders that are working extra hard to recover and get back on schedule. So in terms of the budget, I don't think the budget's the, the issue. I think there's an element of competition that's lacking in public education, which would also mean an element of efficiency that's underutilized. And in terms of the Board of Ed deciding what or who to throw off the cliff, let them decide. But in terms of the budget, I don't see it being a money problem. I see it as an efficiency problem and an element of competition problem. But the meanwhile, the people in the schools, teachers, fantastic. They're using every resource they have. They have lots of resources and they're mostly focused on strategy right now.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Snyder?
I'm so excited to answer this question. I have four children that are all, that all attend Norwalk Public Schools and, and have only attended Norwalk Public Schools. I have one at Rowayton, I have one at Roten, and I have two at Bryan McMahon. And I'll tell you, our schools need a lot of help. My son started off his high school year with no Spanish teacher for a couple of weeks. Our, this biology teacher is leaving. And honestly, what it comes down to is the funding that for our school starts at the state level. And just to give people out there an idea, a student in Norwalk gets about $938 versus a student in Hartford that gets about $10,000. And how, how is that fair? You know, we have such, we have such an increasing population here in Norwalk and all you all have to do is just go to the parking lot around the corner and you'll see it for yourself. We need to hire more teachers to ease the burden on the teachers that are already so incredibly overwhelmed. I think it was back in 2005, if in Norwalk, our free and reduced lunch was about 23%. And now it is over 60% in 2021. Our children have, our students have a lot of needs here that are not being met. And, and we need to do better for the kids here. It's not as great as it, as others would think that it is. They need some help.
Thank you. Mr. Livingston?
Thank you. First, I want to say I think we have tremendous teachers in the city and they deserve all the support we can give them. And there's a couple of comments. One, you know, we talked about student funding from Hartford. We all think there should be more money from Hartford. Unfortunately, there was a case brought by Norwalk and other municipalities against the state and the funding mechanism, which we didn't win. The formula has been adjusted. We're getting more, but it's clearly not as much as we deserve. But I'm going to go back to the question. We talk about fully funding and I don't really know what that means because there didn't get as much as he asked for. And I dare say that no department in the city got what they asked for. Not, so no department in the city was fully funded, to use that term. And as Lisa said, under state law, we can't ever give them less than they got the year before. So they, they received more than some other departments did. And I'm not minimizing that. I think they deserve the money, but I think we got to be careful of the terminology. And, and just one of the hardest part of this job, and I think the hardest part of this job is when we sit down at budget season every year and try and decide how we're going to spend our tax dollars because every decision affects taxes one way or another. So yes, we could put more money into roads, we could put more money into, into schools, but we have to consider what the effects of that are when we do it. And so I just want to emphasize how difficult it is. We do our best. I think we have managed to make good decisions in the past. The school board is getting, the school district is getting more money, historic increases over the last, I think, eight years. And we do support them very strongly. In terms of the cliff, that's, also I agree with Ms. Shanahan's a little of an odd term. But I will note, again, my time is short, that the mayor has proposed using money from the ARPA funds the city is receiving, as well as from pilot funds the city is going to be receiving to minimize that so-called cliff over the next few years. And I finally I'll add that we are engaged with an efficiency study with the Board of Education to help find savings and efficiencies in our spending, both citywide and Board of Education wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Any rebuttals on that question?
I think we'll be amazed to see what kind of efficiencies the Board of Ed can come up with and what efficiencies the schools can come up with. If instead of the Board of Education deciding or the council deciding that the student decides and says, take my $18,000 or whatever the number is that Norwalk and Connecticut spend per student and say, you know what, I'm going to take it over here to New Canaan Country Day or to St. XYZ, and I'm just going to bring it over there. That would introduce an element of competition like you won't believe. It'll introduce an element of efficiency like you won't believe. It might be the end of the teachers' union, so be it. But that would really be an earthquake to modern education in a positive, in a positive sense, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Shanahan?
Well, I just wanted to finish my thoughts that I was going to express as I was making my statements. I do really also am looking forward to understanding what the efficiency study results will be because I do think that that's going to be a really important starting part in our dialogue. And I think that both the city and the Board of Ed can learn a lot about things that we can do better to save more money for the taxpayers. And that's absolutely crucial. In addition, I also think that we maybe ought to be broadening our reach for school funding beyond just our own budgets, but maybe to making more grants and also looking to our local businesses for support, also for Board of Education priorities.
Okay, thank you. Anything, I think we're going to start with closing statements now. I don't think we have enough time for another round of questions and rebuttals. So the person to go first in this, in this instance will be Mr. Ranello.
Yes, thank you to all of you and the other candidates. You've all had some great ideas. I have no doubt that all of us on this panel, again, are raving fans of living in Norwalk or wouldn't have been here this long. We're raving fans of Norwalk or we wouldn't be participating in our government. But I think what we have are some very different points of view of what Norwalk's going to be. Do we want to be Stanford? Or do we want to be Norwalk, whatever that means on our own terms? In terms of meeting people out there, like I said, what I'm hearing is, is there's a few issues that want to be addressed and the best I can give you is a commitment to listen and remember that your opinion matters more than my own. Thank you.
Mr. Livingston?
Thank you. I would like to again thank the League for putting on this debate and my colleagues up here for the participation. My wife and I have been married for 35 years and residents of Norwalk for 34th of years. I'm an attorney and was vice president and secretary of Applied Biosystems, formerly PerkinElmer. And I'm currently an adjunct at UConn Law School. I've had the privilege of representing the citizens of District E on the council for the past six years. I've served as council president. And I'm currently chair of the council's land use and building management committee and a member of the planning, public works and ordinance committees. I'm also the council representative to the historical commission and a member of the Harbor Loop Sona Wharf Steering Committee. So why am I running for a fourth term? I truly believe that the next two years will be critical to the future of Norwalk and its residents. And I have the background, experience and relationships to help shape that future. Our record on the council supports this. I've been involved in many initiatives during the past six years, but I'm most proud of leading the effort through plastic bags, styrofoam and straw ordinances, all of which has reduced plastic waste in the city. I partner with Ms. Shanahan and Public Works to bring food waste collection in Norwalk and an amended tree ordinance to help protect and increase our tree canopy. Most recently, I've led efforts to combine the planning and zoning commissions, which will make the city's planning and zoning process more efficient. As chair of the land use committee, I've helped oversee in excess of $200 million in school construction projects. But I'm also not afraid to stand up for what I believe, as I did when I voted against the initial COCO project. By the way, if this is rubber stamping, then I don't, don't know what that term means. Ms. Shanahan and I have worked tirelessly to address resident concerns, be it traffic, sidewalks or flooding, to name just a few. But there are still much to do, including addressing the issues caused by climate change, improving walkability and keeping our city affordable for residents. My approach has always been to work with everyone and listen and learn so I can make the best decisions for our residents. I will continue to do that if reelected and hope you will support me on November 2nd. Thank you.
Ms. Schneider, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you so much to the League of Women Voters. Like I said before, I'm not a politician. I'm a concerned parent. My husband and I have lived in Norwalk for over 20 years. We have four children. We've never lived in any neighboring towns. Norwalk is our home. We're loyal to fellow Norwalkers. And we want to continue to be able to afford to live in Norwalk. I don't want to end up like my neighbor Fran that, you know, lived here, worked at Norwalk Hospital and, you know, as a senior citizen, she could no longer afford to live here anymore. That's horrible. And that should not be allowed to happen. So I'm just going to read here. So, you know, again, considering that Norwalk has become the most densely populated city in Western Connecticut, it is critical to have representatives who will vote for what is best for the residents of District E. As an independent, free of party bias, residents can feel confident that I will listen and work with other council members. Ultimately, I will be mindful of every decision that is made and how it will benefit the residents of District E versus blindly rubber stamping along party lines. In other words, we need to have balance on our council, balance on our Board of Ed, balance in our city. We should not have 24 out of 25 people in the city who are voting the same time, at the same way at every time. We need to hear diversity of thought and diversity of opinions. And as an independent, I can offer that. I will welcome and include the residents of our community. They will be aware of when decisions are made, why and how it will impact their lives. The significant increase in Norwalk's population without corresponding property taxes has really strained our, our already underfunded schools. It impacted the maintenance of our roads, our sidewalks, our sewers and our storm drains. And if I'm elected November 2nd, I will start from day one to make sure everybody hears from me regularly through regular communication. And I will advocate for each one of us in our community for what makes sense for Norwalkers first.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shanahan. And please refrain from making gestures on your video. Thank you very much.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to my fellow panelists tonight for bringing this event to the voters of Norwalk. I'm a strong believer in public engagement and discourse. Events like this make us all informed voters. Being your District E common council representative has in many ways been my dream job. My, bringing my skills as a former attorney, as well as a community leader, I've worked hard to find solutions for our community, including everything from potholes, speeding, car thefts, lack of sidewalks and the devastating effects of flooding from the recent storms we've suffered through. With Mr. Livingston, we've convened meetings with our constituents to listen to their concerns and to discuss these issues very fully. We have brought city staff along with us to commit city resources, resolve these needs. In addition, I'm proud of my record as a councilperson who's led the city in addressing and adopting more sustainable initiatives. Mr. Livingston and I went to the city to advocate for and initiate the first food waste collection pilot in the city. This program has been wildly successful and we hope to see it adopted citywide. I brought the idea of a tree summit to the city. Out of that planning meeting came support for new tree ordinance, among other important initiatives. Working hand in hand with our tree warden, DPW, planning and zoning, the conservation office, as well as our, for our, our committee members, Mr. Livingston and I rewrote a new tree ordinance that will go a long way to protecting our tree canopy that we now have and to grow it in the future for the benefit of current and future Norwalk residents. We have proactively been advocating for a more walkable city. I sit on the Harbor Loop Sona Wharf Steering Committee and we are working to add new sections to the Riverwalk on the east side of the Norwalk River. Wouldn't it be great to be able to walk from the Maritime Aquarium all the way up to Wall Street along the river? Our waterfront is an amazing asset for our city and we ought to find ways for all of us to enjoy it by providing more access through changes to our zoning laws. None of these initiatives are passive adoptions of the mayor's agenda, but rather the work of an engaged councilperson who has the best interests of her district and her city in mind. I would like to continue to work on behalf of my district. Therefore, I'm asking your support on November 2nd. Please vote to reelect me as one of your District E common council members. Thank you very much.
Very much. Thank you to all of the candidates for participating tonight and thank you all for stepping up to serve the public. I know we all appreciate your taking this effort and making time for the community. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Norwalk, thank you and don't forget to vote on November 2nd.
Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, I, I sympathize with your cat. I put mine outside.
I think. Got to have a cat on his room, right?
Yeah.